Can we come to order? Okay, we are going to start with our reorganization meeting. Actually, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance with our reorganization meeting. If you could please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Starting off with roll call, we have everybody here. Could I get an approval of the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We are at communications and we did not have anybody sign up, so we will move past communications. And we are up to acceptance of unofficial results for the April 6, 2021 annual school election. So there is a recommendation on eboards if somebody would like to make that motion.
I'll move to accept the unofficial results of the April 6 election.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion passes, seven zero. And recognition of outgoing board members, the one we hate to lose.
On behalf of Melville School District, the district administration, our employees and students served, I would like to thank Ms. Lisa Mesmer for her service to the Board of Education for the past three years. We thank you for guiding our district through your decisions related to policy, finance, and governance, always with the best interest of students in mind. I would like to present you with a plaque formally recognizing you for your service. Thank you, Lisa.
And also, on behalf of Melville School District, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Kevin Schartner for completing his second year as President of the Melville School District Board of Education. Also, we are grateful for your service and your commitment to the students, families, and employees of Melville School District. And I would like to present you with our traditional plaque formally recognizing your service.
Okay, we always take a little bit of time right now to wish our outgoing board members some good luck. And I know a few of us have things we definitely want to say, so Jean, if you want to kick us off.
Yeah, I'm going to try and do this so everybody can understand me. Lisa, thank you for saying yes when I asked you to consider a run for the Melville School District Board of Education. You have indeed been a tremendous asset to this board and to our entire community. As a career-registered nurse, you brought wisdom, timely information, clarity, and insight. During the COVID-19 crisis facing our schools, you never missed a beat, even when attending in person wasn't possible. And while being stretched to the limit as a frontline worker, you continued to serve without hesitation. I personally appreciate our years of friendship, and I know the Melville community is thankful to you for your willing spirit and dedication to our kids. Love, Jean.
Aww. Appreciate that so much.
I'll go next. So Jean stole my thunder, that's basically what I was going to say. It's been a real pleasure serving with you on the board and getting to know you. Little did you know how valuable you would be as a registered nurse when a pandemic hit. So having your opinions and just foresight and all those things combined as a nurse really helped as we processed through all the terrible things we've had to make decisions on this past year. I really want to thank you for your service and I wish you good luck in the future. I know you're probably going to keep your wheels spinning as fast as they're spinning now. But you've been a huge asset to the board and I appreciate everything you've done, so good luck.
I guess we can just keep going around the table. So when you ran in 2018, we had two open board seats and yourself and Tori both stepped up in that. And that was a point with this board and our community when we were still early on in that community culture change that started with Prop R. It was a pretty critical time. We needed smart people, people that understood our community, how people here think, and what's important to us and who had the best interests of our students and our community at heart. And you ended up stepping up into this and serving our community. It's your perspective, your professionalism, wisdom, same word that Jean used, which is really true, really helped to make us a better board today than we were three years ago. And I'm glad I got to know you, proud I was able to serve with you, and wish you the best in everything you do next.
I'll get teary-eyed. We have a unique bond, obviously, running at the same time. I will never forget the frigid cold day in December, which Patrick, that our cold day, that's nothing compared to that cold day in 2017 in December. Sitting out waiting to place our names on the ballot. And the opportunity to work alongside you, to really get to know you. The support I received from you and I think, you know, vice versa, in times during our campaign where we felt like we were breaking, because it was, like Kevin had mentioned, a pretty critical time and we had some opposition that made it tough. I mean, it was a battle and sometimes unfair and we were successful. And I'm so grateful to have been through that with you. I can't imagine not only doing it alone, but doing it with anybody else. Your wisdom, the value you have added to this board has been remarkable. And I am so grateful to have had the opportunity to serve with you and look forward to staying in touch. And just wish you all of the best and just really want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything that you've given to this board despite all of the obstacles that you have faced. You know, like everyone has said, you just keep going and you keep always finding ways to keep the communication up and share your perspective, which has been incredible. So, thank you.
Well, Lisa, I've only had a year to serve with you, but I've been very appreciative of all the guidance you provided. You and Tori helped mentor me to start out with. And in fact, three years ago, when you went to Mosaic to campaign, you actually started me on this path to become a board member. So sometimes you never know what you're going to find out when you actually reach out to people. So I want to thank you for that. And I've been impressed the fact that you've always been here, you've always given support, going well and above, even showing up in scrubs after a 14-hour day, knowing that you need to be here and you need to help. You need to help guide this board and guide the school and make sure it's about the kids all the time. So I want to thank you for everything you've done.
Well, let me say a couple of things. Lisa, I want to thank you for your contribution to the conversation this board's had over the last three years. I think when Kevin talks about how this board has tried to change the culture of the school district, I think the culture of this board has changed. Because we have people with different viewpoints and different understandings. And I think your quiet contributions and steady commentary helped all of us get there. I think the other thing is, you were, and I'll piggyback on what Tori said, you stepped up to volunteer for one of the most highly-paying, did I say highly-paying jobs? To a volunteer job that at times is really rewarding and sometimes is really tough. And you stepped up and you've made us all better board members for doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you, everyone. I'm not really sure that I really deserve all of this. But, you know, this afternoon I was thinking, and I don't know if everyone knows this, I am an Oakville graduate, 1984. And both my kids are graduates from Melville Schools, as are my siblings. So I counted it out. And in my entire life, I have been involved in something all but 10 years of my life with something in this school district. So it is definitely something that I care very deeply about. My kids were in school here when there was a lot of contention in the board and a lot of just really negative things seemed to be going on in the administration and between, in the community. And so I was really glad to have the opportunity because it was something that I've been thinking about for really literally decades. But the professionalism of all of you and the administration, you know, Dr. Gaines and Dr. Bressler and everybody has, you know, allowed me to step up and be a part of this. You know, unfortunately, the thing that you all brought up is really the thing that has made me a one-term board member when I decided to do this. That was not my plan, but I truly do not have the bandwidth left to be on a school board and to be a frontline healthcare worker after this last year. I don't really want to belabor it, but it's really been an incredibly difficult year personally, professionally. And I really have to give you all the respect in the world and the administration. I think they've done a phenomenal job steering this district through the most unprecedented thing ever in the existence of the school district, I think. You're never going to please everybody, but I think that every single person in this room has the best intentions at heart, definitely is all about the kids. And that's the thing I've missed last year, which I hope next year you'll get to enjoy that. It's been a wonderful, wonderful experience and I do hope to keep in touch with everyone. And I just want to thank you and a special shout-out to Marshall because he was my very first contact with administration. And we went and he really explained, without that meeting that we had at the very beginning, I would have been lost probably for years. So I really do, really do appreciate everything. Thank you. Yes.
Sin or die? Get together.
I know. I just have to say, I'm going to Disney World tomorrow, so.
So you've gone from Fantasyland, now you're going to Disneyland.
That's right. And good luck, Patrick, where is he? Good luck, you'll love it, you really will. You know, I know it's always somebody else's yes. And so, look at it positively. Thank you, Pam. Turn my computer in.
Are we ready to start back up? Okay.
So if we could have Tori and Patrick step forward six feet apart? And if you could raise your right hand and repeat the oath in unison. You see me?
I do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Missouri and that I will be the leader of our belief in the United States of America. Just as we do as a school director and for the Melville School District of Arnhem County, St. Louis, State of Missouri, in the state of liability and for the United States of America.
Congratulations to both you, Tori and Patrick. And now at this part in the meeting, I turn it over to Dr. Gaines for the beginning of the officers' elections.
Alrighty. I'll do the election of the officers of the president and vice president, and then the president will take care of the secretary and treasurer. So are there nominations for president of the board?
I would like to nominate Kevin for board president. I think it's important that we have continuity. We had officers that did a great job as we went into the pandemic, and I'd like to see them there to lead us out as we move into this fall and back to as close to normal as we can be.
And I'd like to second that.
Do you accept?
I accept. Thank you.
Are there any other nominations?
I move the nomination cease.
Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Are there nominations for vice president?
I would like to nominate Peggy Hassler. I think to echo Larry's words, continuity and continuing on in that role. And what a fabulous job that you've done partnering with the board, with Kevin, so.
And I'd like to second that.
Do you accept?
I do.
Are there any other nominations?
I'll move the nomination cease.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm done.
Okay. Okay, can I get nominations for secretary, please?
I would like to nominate Tori Belkey for secretary for all the same reasons already stated.
I'll second.
Are there any further nominations? Can I get a motion to cease nominations?
So moved.
Second.
Do you accept? I do.
Do you accept? Yeah, sorry. I'm glad you're accepting. Alright. Oh yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We only do this once a year, it gets difficult sometimes. Alright, treasurer, treasurer's the easy one. Can I get a motion to nominate Marshall Crutcher for treasurer?
So moved.
Second.
Do you accept?
I accept.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations.
Congrats.
Alright. Next up is Board of Education Committee assignments, which we had in our eboards, the assignments for this year because we rotate those every year. But this year also had the advocacy committee added to it, which Jean, Larry, and Jeff, you three are on that for this year. So can I get a motion to approve the committee assignments as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next up is MSBA delegate. Can I get nominations for the MSBA primary delegate?
I'd like to nominate Larry Felton. He's worked extensively with MSBA and is obviously our best choice for the position.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? Can I get a motion to cease nominations?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Larry is our primary MSBA delegate. Thank you, Larry. Congratulations. Could I get nominations for MSBA alternate delegate? Was it? I would like to alternate, or I'd like to alternate, I would like to nominate Jeff for this position.
I'll second.
I guess I should ask, do you accept?
I do.
Alright, are there any other nominations? Can I get a motion to cease nominations?
So moved.
Second? Or a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Awesome.
Can I get nominations for Special School District Council Delegate? Yeah, actually, this one, I think I'd like to nominate Larry Felton for MSBA delegate because Larry has been our MSBA main rep here for a few, or no, I'm sorry, SSD. Because Larry has been very involved with SSD for the last few years. And I know you have continuing things that are going on in that. That would be great to have you continue with. And I know you have continuing things that are going on in that. That would be great to have you continue with.
Thanks, Seth.
I'll second.
Got a second? Are there any other nominations? Can I get a motion to cease nominations?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Larry. Look forward to the work you do again this year on that.
Yeah.
Okay, can I get nominations for the special school district council alternate?
I'd like to nominate Patrick.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Can I get a motion to cease nominations?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Patrick. And that is all. We have moved through it. All right. Congratulations, everybody. So we are back to adjournment of this meeting, and let's be back in about 10 minutes, which puts us at seven oh six. Okay. We have already done the pledge. So roll call, we have a slightly new roll call, but we have everybody here. Welcome, Patrick. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're up to communications. We do not have anybody sign up for the first communication session, so we will skip past that one. And then standing committee reports. Has anybody attended any committees or anything else of note since our last meeting?
Quite a few of us attended the Zoom MSBA spring regional meeting, and it wasn't super long, but interesting when we divided up, I think, into the small groups and discussed topics that were related to the Belcher Scholarship recipient and the Ss that they wrote, all in regards to this past school year and to COVID, and to a student's perspective, and to what went right, what problems they saw. And it was interesting to hear from other school districts talk about that. And I think certainly something that, looking forward, would be a good opportunity, I think, for us to get together and discuss that a little bit more to really take a look at what what's gone on in the past year and what we can, you know, say went well, and what we've learned and what we can see moving forward. Because if you don't learn from this, then you're, you know, not doing something right, so. I don't know.
I mean, since that was my first one, it was a nice exposure to my peers, at least locally. So it was a great exchange of ideas on lots of levels during that course of that two hours. So for me, it was a great way to see that we're doing things, you know, a number of ways we're doing the same thing for everybody, but it was nice to see people doing things differently because obviously our district is a different size than a good number of districts in the area. Definitely look forward to more of those in the future.
Sorry.
Yeah, I kind of thought that legislative session, too, was really good on Monday. It was online, or you could go to Jefferson City with it, and there was a lot of really good information. And they had legislators in a panel forum talking about certain things. People were asking questions. And a lot of educational stuff to come out about charters and the scholarships, I'm going to put quotes around scholarships, and how that really impacts public education, both directly and indirectly. So a lot of very interesting information in that. And I think Larry was actually at Jefferson City that day.
I was up there. The Mike Pratt, who served with, was one of the officers with me, was awarded the Carter Award Advocacy Award. Mike, in addition to being an MSBA president, was also on the National School Board Association as a delegate. He was superintendent locally, I believe it was Parkway West. So he's an old friend, and I had the opportunity, along with another previous president, to nominate him. So it was a real pleasure to see him recognized for for the hard work he's put in. One of the things that I thought was also interesting with the legislative forum was just the recap of what's going on. We have a, if you had a chance to see Mike Reed and Mike Grody and Sean Rhodes and Susan Goldhammer, that's as good a crew as you're going to see. And one of the interesting things about Mike Reed is he's probably the most respected lobbyist, if I can use that term, in Jefferson City. He doesn't strong-arm people. He talks with them. There are other organizations that are not held in that high esteem, but he's pretty well handled. I think the other thing I thought was really interesting, the charter school one, there was also one about education savings accounts, and they had people from Arizona and Ohio who were involved in this. Arizona is the cradle of where the ESA bills came from. And one of the things that he mentioned was an organization called Alec, which is the American Legal Exchange Committee, or whatever it is, made up of legislators from states, and they pretty much manufacture legislation. What you see for ESA and charter schools probably came from them. And I can't say enough about the legislators who were up there. There were six of them. You couldn't tell who the Republicans and the Democrats were. They were focused, and their actions speak that way. They have supported public education through thick and thin. Of all the ones I've seen, and it was virtual, I'm sure virtual is good, but in person, this was as good a presentation as they've done. I thought it was, like, everybody was just happy to be in the room with their mask, you know, staying away from each other, but to have a chance just to interact and work in that. The other thing I'll mention is before next month's meeting, our, the April 29 meeting, the advocacy committee will get together at 5:30 up in the conference room, and we'll see if we can figure out what we're going to do for the year.
Yeah, I'll say I think your idea to start this advocacy committee was probably perfectly timed for some of the things that are going on, because it really does seem like the truth about the situation needs to be understood and communicated with people in education and outside of education, parents, community, all of that. So I think what the three of you are going to be doing with that is going to be very important. So thank you for getting that started and volunteering for one more committee. I've talked with a couple of people, a couple of board members separately, about some of the items that have come up in different places. So I talked with you a little bit, Larry, you on the advocacy side. And I think where we're going to be leaning towards is doing some sort of a Saturday or maybe weeknight retreat, something where we can get four hours or so to go through some of these pretty serious items to have an open discussion. Things that don't fit very well into this kind of a format, but would fit well into a retreat-type format. So there will be more coming on that, and I'll work with Dr. Gaines on figuring out a time for that, well, with everybody, but also with Dr. Gaines. One last thing I wanted to get into was I got to help grade Project Lead the Way projects, and I was impressed. I am an engineer, and some of these kids, the things that they were doing, the skills they were showing from a project management standpoint, working together, developing problem statements, solutions. One kid was working on a Boron hydrogen reactor for clean energy and did a thousand-line Java JavaScript program to do a simulation, and he was bringing up Maxwell's equations and all sorts of things that I haven't seen in 30 years and didn't really want to see again, but I was really impressed. So what a great program. If you get a chance to do that, I'd suggest it, but it was really encouraging to see. Anyone else? Okay, we will move on. Next is action items by consent. If no one has anything to pull, could I get a motion to approve action items by consent?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next up is considering HVAC bids.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I listed a bid for HVAC upgrades at Fordory and Oakville Elementary. The work at Fordory Elementary will be the entire building, and Oakville Elementary is the gym unit replacement. I'd like to move to approve the lowest qualified bid for Fordory Elementary by Haberberger Mechanical, contractors for the amount of $1,337,480, including contingency and professional fees. Also like to move forward to approve the lowest qualified bid for Oakville Elementary for IFS in the amount of $123,540, including contingency and professional fees. Both of these combined is a total of $1,461,020.
What questions do people have?
Are these existing vendors we've worked with before?
Haberberger, it's been a while, but yes, we have worked with both of them.